Okay, good evening and welcome to the June 4th regularly scheduled Easton Middle Public Schools School Committee meeting. I'll call the meeting to order. It is 7:00 PM. This meeting is being both audio and videotaped this evening, and I will ask that everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now have our roll call, please.
Kathy Salati, Recording Secretary.
Bill Fonseca.
Rich Ficero.
Greg Thompson, sitting in for Deirdre Mayo today.
Gordon Smith, Superintendent of Schools.
Elizabeth Marcin Boucher.
Valerie Aneer, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment.
Pamela Blair, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Okay, thank you, and then we have minutes for approval.
I make a motion to approve the executive session meeting minutes of May 21st, 2018.
Motion made.
I'll second.
And seconded, any further discussion? Bearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries forward, zero. Next.
Move to approve the May 21st, 2018 regular session meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion?
Very good job, Kathy.
Did you do this over the recording device?
I used Elcat and the recording.
Wow, that's amazing.
That is amazing.
You did, fantastic, Kathy.
Thank you.
No further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries forward, zero. Committee and subcommittee communications.
I'll start it off by saying, once again, congratulations to all the graduates from Friday night. It was a great ceremony, congratulations. Everybody did a great job with the speeches, and we survived the weather. It was a good night all around.
Rich.
I'll second what Mr. Fonseca said. I have four quick items. I enjoyed International Night at Meadowbrook, and I want to thank the parents who organized it, Melissa Walsh and Heather Lehman. Well attended. Was it right, Mr. Smith, it was pretty large?
It was very well attended, yeah. It was wise to put the dancing first.
Yes, and then I totally enjoyed also the Maple Shade convention convention. That's always a fun time. The collaborative committee met, and we're all set for this Thursday for the teacher recognition at 3:00. This reminded Kathy Hill to be inducted into the Easton Middle Educators Hall of Fame. And that was a great email from Mr. McGee, although successive of our teams.
Yeah.
I did watch our softball team clinch their playoff tournament berth, so I think everybody's playing today and tomorrow with the possible home game for boys across this weekend. Thank you.
Other than graduation was wonderful. You did a very nice speech.
Thank you.
The kids did a great job, and I also have to say that Deirdre did a wonderful job.
Yes, sure did.
I know it's hard to have a child graduating, and I know Billy's done it.
Oh, yeah, Billy's done that.
But they gotta be all tough, but I give her credit for getting up there and a nice speech, and it was a very nice day.
Well, you know what? It's one of the few perks we do get.
That's true.
Believe it or not, it was enjoyable.
It's like the only one.
Yeah, she did a great job.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. We'll now allow an opportunity for visitors to address the committee. Seeing none, we'll move right along to the superintendent's self-assessment. Mr. Smith.
Okay. I won't take up your house, and the labor's probably a good point. I've updated the self-assessment that was in the shared folder. There's obviously, it's not only in the shared folder, but there are paper copies available if you would like one, so it gives you more information as to where we've gone since February and I believe the first March meeting. I've also updated the folders, so that each of the standards, there's a few updated pieces of evidence, as well as the evidence that was there. And depending on how the committee would like to utilize to put together the compilation for the evaluation, I put in a Google Doc that has this information, so you can add to it, or I can put in a blank document, or do both. So whatever is the way you would like to put together the evaluation.
Well, fortunately, Mrs. Mayo's not here. I don't know how she would like it.
How do we do it?
Yeah, I would say, as we've done in the past, put this doc in, and then.
So it's in there as a Google Doc, and so then you can add, all of you can add your points to it.
Yeah, it is one document. We could scroll up and back and see it.
It's one document.
So where do you find it, again?
It's in the shared folder, under the summative evaluation.
Okay. Mrs. Smith, I have one question.
Sure.
I do not see in here anything about the grant that we received. What was it, project?
Project Lead the Way.
Yes, correct. Well, that actually is something that Mrs. Aneer put together with two principals involved. I can put it in there if you like.
No, I don't have to.
No, no, don't get credit anymore.
Just asking.
Oh, nothing except that his.
I did sign.
No, you didn't.
I did sign, but I didn't, since I wasn't.
He had to know we were applying for it.
Yeah, exactly.
Agree, right?
True. So I tried to keep it to items that I was an integral part, not just signing off on it.
I just want to double check one of the statements.
Sure.
Seven capital projects, is that correct, were all approved affecting each building?
Yes, so the three of those, I'm breaking apart and counting them as individual projects, but it's the clock and PA system that impacts three buildings.
Buildings, and then we have.
And then we had four others in addition to those three.
Are you counting the windows and doors?
Windows and doors is in there as well.
As a seven.
Yeah, okay, so seven total.
Just want some clarification.
Thank you. You're welcome. But that's the best approval process and amount we've had approved in capital planning during my tenure as superintendent.
That's a surprise, too.
I mean, they're bonding a few of those to make them happen, so that was really great.
Yeah.
Okay, so what's the timing on this?
Yeah, we basically have.
Today's what?
Until June 18th, unless you want to schedule a meeting just for evaluation.
Why don't, can we all try to get this done as fast as possible? Like, and I'm not saying to rush it, but because.
Saying you want to be thorough and efficient?
No, it's not that I don't want to be thorough, it's just.
I see that Mrs. Mayo's timeline.
Mrs. Mayo has so much happening.
Well, you know what? How about if we shoot for Friday?
Can we shoot for Friday? Is that okay?
I'm just throwing it out there.
So information goes to Mrs. Mayo by Friday?
Right.
Yep.
And just if somebody could let her know that it's coming on the 18th.
Because I'm just going to procrastinate until the January 4th, so I might as well get it done.
Any additional forms that you may need into the shared folder, and then how you want to combine them.
Okay.
You may need them.
If somebody can let Deirdre know what we're doing.
As always, if people have questions, please feel free to drop in, email me, whatever works best for you to respond to anything that might be confusing.
Okay.
And I'll add those things that I just signed off on.
Okay, very good. Moving right along, Assistant Superintendent for Business report, 5.1, gift donation from Meadowbrook parents.
That's right, so in your package, you'll see a letter from Lisa Dakin, the principal of Meadowbrook, requesting the school committee approve a donation from the sound quality acoustical products. They will donate surplus materials that will serve as sound lessening devices. Her plan is to install these into the cafeteria to help people.
Why?
Why? Because they're being donated by a new parent to the school, and they're wonderful products.
Why, why, listen to some kids, it's wonderful to keep.
But when you're outside.
When you're outside the room.
It's just that we're outside.
Oh, okay.
That's her plan.
You're going to be able to hear inside, don't worry.
Yes, it's all the good things.
Okay, I make a motion that we accept the gift donation from a Meadowbrook parent for sound lessening products.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion?
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries forward, zero.
Although they need to keep that Meadowbrook sign up, because that Meadowbrook sign in the cafeteria was made in 1976, and I was there when they made it.
Oh.
So we'll pass it.
We'll pass it.
We'll stay. It's not going to be impacted by any windows project either.
Two years old?
Two years old, yes.
Preach it.
That was two years old.
We're going, it wasn't going there.
Along, it's okay, I don't care.
Okay, we have a report on fundraising activities.
So earlier in the fiscal year, the school committee all asked us to keep track of the fundraising throughout the district, if you recall. You know, you were a little concerned that there might be too much fundraising going on, or too much repetitive fundraising, so as promised, we track this throughout the fiscal year. You will see a sheet on each of the schools except Meadowbrook. There's none that were done within the school. Everything done at their school is PTO. So the PTO fundraising is not a part of this report. You know, if you look at the first sheet, obviously the high school has the bulk of the fundraising in the district, with a substantial amount that goes to charitable organizations. That's about $10,000 that went to charity, yeah. So mostly it's for the classes, Model Congress, music.
Fifteen different organizations, I counted that. That's quite impressive.
It really is.
The outreach.
And again, the next one in line would be Birchland Park.
Student Council.
About half the size of the high school, and there about $8,200 went to charity, directly to charity, and the rest was for their student council.
And then they turn around and do events, okay? Done movie nights before, and.
Yeah, it all comes back to the kids, you're right.
Yeah, very impressive.
I know, I've got to admit, the student council at Birchland Park really was motivated this year. They did a lot.
Yeah.
I was impressed.
Tim's been very impressed with this group.
Yep.
And any, just to make mention, at the high school, there's a couple that are still blank there, and that's because those are still ongoing, or we haven't received the final tallies on those, down at the bottom.
I thought Meadowbrook did Jump Up for Heart though, isn't it? There, there's something. We don't have Meadowbrook, though.
No, I was not given any information.
I saw a list in the Maple Shade, I'm sorry.
From Meadowbrook, I was told that everything was PTO. I can certainly double check that.
I don't think that's PTO, though.
I'll double check that for you.
That's a school-wide fundraiser.
What's the name of that one?
Jump Up for Heart.
For Heart. I will double check that for you and get back to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We need a.
I don't think we need to.
This is really for your ears.
For data.
If you remember, last year, we developed a policy around fundraising, and also developed a form, which obviously helped us track the fundraising that's going on, and then this is the compilation of tracking that fundraising.
Okay, so the profit versus total collected, that's not correct, right? Because, so for, I'm looking at high school, the first one, the cookie dough at 4,461, they didn't keep all of that, correct?
Well.
They had to pay for the cookie dough. The reason why I was asking is, my question was percentage that was kept versus percentage that's given to a for-profit company like that. Know what I'm saying?
I do.
So I don't see, it shouldn't be 100.
Well, what she was saying, I had one of the staff in the central office keep track of this, and so what she was saying was 100% of what, and I will double check that.
Of the profit.
Correct, so the, yes, so 100% of the profit came back, yes.
But we don't know what the percentage of the collected is profit.
And I can double check that for you.
I know it's a lot more work to do, but that's kind of what we were looking for.
But she has all of the paperwork here, so I don't think it'll be as difficult at the next meeting, I can have that information for you.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Because it only applies to certain ones, it doesn't apply to all of them.
Yeah, the ones that would be a for-profit company, that, I mean, that was part of the research, was to kind of figure out, yeah, we're doing with that, too. But this is great, I'll look at this a little further, so thank you.
You're very welcome.
Any other questions?
Great, thank you.
Nice work, yes.
Okay, we have an update on our FY '19 budget.
Okay, in your packet, we basically have just tried to organize a spreadsheet that you've been looking at all the way through the budget development process. So going down that spreadsheet, our current budget is $29,195,201. The second item there was the contractual obligations, or more or less what we would consider a level services budget, and that was $542,000. And then the additional increase that the town gave us beyond level services, which was about $63,000. All told, that's for next year, fiscal year 2019, an operating budget of $29,800,201. Keep continuing down, you have the amount of money that basically was transferred from the town side to the school side to handle the outsourcing of transportation, so that's another $507,487, and that brings you to $30,307,688, which is a 3.8% increase. With that budget, the $29 million, because that's really the operational budget, the other part is going towards transportation and the assessment that we'll be receiving for transportation. We had, if you remember, outlined four during the development process, potential new positions, and the original priority order is, as you see them listed, it was an intensive special needs teacher at the high school, as you now have students moving from the middle school in that program to the high school, but we have now a program established, elementary through middle school, looking to finish that off and have that program run through the high school grades. Then you have an instructional technology specialist at the high school, that was the second, in terms of how it originally was prioritized. We have a social-emotional teacher at Birchland, and we have a math coach/interventionist at the elementary level. What we've tried to do with those positions is just give the school committee some possible strategies, if we wanted to go beyond one position, which I believe the town was looking at intensive special needs, and that's why it's such a set number of 63,000 beyond level services. So there are ways you can move toward achieving more in this budget, especially around social and emotional needs and some of the other positions, but we need some direction from the school committee as to what, is this still the priority order we should be looking at, or is there, are there other thoughts that maybe at this point we should be discussing and looking at? As you look on the right side of the spreadsheet, there are strategies, basically, and there may be additional strategies than we've listed here. Most of these strategies, we've talked about, not only in our discussions, but also our discussions with the town, so these are discussions that we've had on both sides. It's not something that we wouldn't be discussing with town manager, town finance director, and at least the president of the town council, if not the entire town council. So just looking at that, depending on how the priority order remains, or is projected that should something change tonight, the budget, the new budget would certainly help us move forward on the intensive special needs. The instructional technology specialist, if you're thinking you're not going to shift in FTEs at all, FTEs are at the bottom of the page, so currently we're projecting that we'll have 400.7 FTEs.
Is that written, Mr. Smith? Because we lost 11 positions of FY '18?
Correct, we did. However, we had taken them out of.
In the bus driver.
Yeah.
Is it just the bus driver? Because how many bus drivers do we have?
We had.
It's like a 17.2 FTEs, right over there.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted.
However, when we sent our budget to the town, we had already reduced by that.
Okay.
So you are correct.
Good.
So we would have been higher had we continued to have transportation. We would have been, you see on FY '18, we had 411.6, we would have probably been higher than that, we would have been probably around 415.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So anyway, the strategies that you're seeing there, we do have a tech para that right now remains unfilled at the high school. If you were looking to sort of stay in kind with some of these positions, that could be something that could be reworked, and you look at the instructional technology specialist, and those duties would have to either be redeployed, or the instructional technology specialist takes those duties on. Social-emotional teacher, which this budget has a lot of elements in it as we developed it, that are looking to support our students with identified social-emotional needs, as well as needs we may identify as we continue to work with our students on a daily basis. You could use the $40,000 that we originally were going to transfer within our budget over to allow the schools to continue to look at what programs they might want to in FY 2019 look to expand or introduce in supporting students at each building. So that gives you, it takes away what the schools may receive, but it establishes that program at the middle school. We still would probably need to look at some other funding, but it starts you off at a pretty good base.
What was the, what were those contracted services originally? Were those the ones that the principals were using to start setting the social-emotional stuff in place?
Correct, so this year.
So we're taking from our little ones, because we needed from the middle.
Well, no, we would.
I'm letting them, I'm letting.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I was going to explain.
For budget purposes, I'm letting the town council know that social-emotional well-being, being such a big thing, and it is important, that if something happens, we're taking away from one group of students to help for another. It's not like it's just magically coming out of our back pocket.
Correct, yeah, no, what we, what basically we've done is, the last two years, we've,
for lack of a better way of saying it, we've bet on ourselves, and so what we do is, we build this year's budget we're currently in, and next year's budget, we were looking to continue to possibly move money that might have been, or was allocated for possible out-of-district tuitions, and not a lot of it, but take some and bring it over to contracted services, and then allow the schools to start to identify what might be something else we can do. It's not, you're right, it's not a ton of money, but they will have the same money instead of expanding it, they'll have the same money that they had this year, if we choose to do that.
The FY '18 FTEs, 411.6, includes the bus drivers?
That's correct.
So there's 17.2 bus drivers?
Yeah, it was right around.
Positions, so then.
Now, remember, the kindergarten positions, from full-day kindergarten, had to come back in.
Okay, let's walk, can we walk through that? So if I take the 411.6 and take away the 17.2, right, take away the bus drivers, so we're talking apples to apples, I'm at 394.4. And then kindergarten, we added in how many?
We had kindergarten teachers.
Two pairs and a teacher.
Three pairs.
Four.
And two teachers.
Oh, two teachers.
So five.
I believe it's five.
So we're at 399.4.
So then the 400 point, that's the 1.2 that we added in, because it includes intensive special needs and the point.
Oh, yeah, there is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
That's where I'd like to be. 407, 400.7.
Now, the one thing that we have discussed, but we haven't discussed it throughout the budget process, we've discussed it at different times with probably each of you as you ask questions regarding special education, one more fluid area of our budget is special education, and specifically paraprofessionals. So that's something that we try to not necessarily add FTEs, but there have been cases in years prior where we receive a new student from a district, no matter how we maybe reschedule paras, we're not able to meet the needs with the current personnel, and then we have hired mid-year. So that's just one area that we need to be aware of.
Can we, I know we talked about this, Rich, I'll give you a second. In the future, can we just be informed of new FTEs?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Only because it's a long-term liability for the town for benefits, as well as the cost of the employee, and there's only so much we can do, it's a necessity, but I think if we're kept apprised of how many we add through the year would be helpful.
Absolutely.
And then if we're in some dire, you know, situation, and we need to look at budget, then we'll at least know what's happened over the last.
So there will be an understanding, though, and sometimes, as Mr. Smith said, with paraprofessionals, it can be very, it's a little bit challenging, because IEPs can change, not only, it's not only new students coming into the district, but IEPs are looked at on an annual basis, and things can change.
IEP meetings.
So that's not something we can discuss.
And I wouldn't say we want necessary reasonings, or, it has to happen, it has to happen, but if, if all of a sudden we're made aware of 10 new employees, I'm not saying that's going to happen, then it's a concern to us. If it's one throughout the year, two throughout the year, it makes sense, but I would say if we could try our best to re-shift FTEs so that our FTE number doesn't creep up.
Sure, so one of the reasons why it's so consistent is because we've looked at that, just as you're saying, and what we do try to do is make sure that we're redeploying or rescheduling personnel throughout the district, so that we don't have to hire FTEs.
Right, I know we do that.
So one of the things that we're doing right now is, we're sitting down with principals, and we're going through the needs that will be in their buildings for next year, because IEP meetings basically go all the way through the beginning of May. So now that we have all the needs, IEPs have been completed for the most part, we can start to make sure that we have paraprofessionals where we need to have them for the start of the school year.
Right, okay. Go ahead, Richard.
So this sheet here, Mr. Smith, as I read the possible strategies, are you recommending that we try to fund number one and number two under new positions in our original priority order?
I'm actually just giving you strategies to, the original priority order is there, and I tried to give you a strategy to possibly achieve any one of the top three. I don't have, and it's not just me, going back to, you know, all of us have been involved in looking at how we might go further on the goals that we set in this budget, and without, obviously, increasing FTEs by an extreme amount, or sacrificing, as Mrs. Marcin Boucher was pointing out, some other element of a program that has been successful.
For the instructional technical specialist, because I know we discussed it last year, but is that individual going to be working one-on-one with students, or they're going to be working with the staff?
Predominantly with the staff, but you may have a situation very similar to what we see with our coaches, where they, the individual may be modeling or co-teaching as they try new techniques, new strategies.
I understand it will trickle down to the students, who are extremely tech savvy.
Starts off predominantly staff.
Okay, so for me personally, and I don't, you know, I'm not disparaging the technology specialist, and I know that there's an unfilled tech para that maybe can help pick up the slack at that point, but I'm.
The strategy there would be to swap it, one FTE, one FTE.
Right, but I guess I feel that if we were able to find any, I would rather personally see the social-emotional teacher at Birchland. I think that that is just.
So that to be number two?
I would rather, myself personally, for that to be number two, because I think we've been looking at that for more than one year now. You know, I think that's been something that, I think we've kind of worked for a few years now, that they've been trying to work that, and I know that at the high school level, they've been thinking of this technology specialist, too, but it's kind of come on our radar the last year, and I want something that's going to really impact our students the most, I guess, that's my thought.
See, I'll echo those sentiments, but given, you know, when we first did this list back in February, things have changed in the world since then. So in my mind, and I understand the urgency of all these positions, but I'll have to echo what Beth said, and say, social-emotional should be a position, if we're going to increase by one, that we look at social-emotional at the middle school, even, you know, I just see, I see the importance and the urgency in that.
Or even if we take that dollar amount for the contracted services, and we don't add an FTE, but we use that money to get somebody, even if they're contracted out, to come in, give ideas, to guidance, have them think about what it is that they want out of a social-emotional, you know, program, and maybe not even do the FTEs, but use it as a contract.
But I still think, I think we need another body in that, in the middle school.
So just to provide some clarification on that, so what you're describing, we would do probably with, you know, by putting the $40,000 in place, and all schools would benefit from it?
Okay.
And so then the middle school could look at that. What the middle school, I believe, was looking to do by adding a social-emotional teacher was actually begin a program where you have a special education teacher running a classroom, students that, who have already been identified, would be supported through that classroom, and you have someone who is experienced in both teaching modified curriculum, but also and you have someone who is experienced in both teaching modified curriculum, but also experienced in dealing with behavior situations and emotional situations. And then that program supports students, and it may grow as you go through a year. It may also reduce in terms of enrollment in the class.
So it's not so much like an intensive resource room that they go in and they stay in, they just kind of come in during the day, they work with them, they move along to the regular classes?
Some students would be there and have it every day on their schedule, and then some students might be more mainstreamed, and then depending on what support they may need, mainstreaming could be reduced for a brief period of time when more support is needed, and then you, it's very fluid. Thank you.
I think we have to be very careful. I, changing the priority list, I have a problem with that, because, because we, from the very beginning, as you said, Mr. Thompson, back in February, number two was always number two. Also, this has to be extremely transparent with the town council slash town, I mean, wow, the school, the school department found the money to do this anyway.
I know that.
No, that's what we're not gonna do.
Cannot be that.
And so that's why my, my suggestion is we go with the 400.7, and we work within that. So if we wanna take the second suggestion, I might be okay with that. If we wanna look at the third, social emotional, does Tim have someone through attrition, an FTE that we can look at?
In terms of reducing an FTE?
Uh huh.
We have not talked about any reductions.
Yes, and so, and, and so that he would get the social emotional?
We haven't discussed that. Because our thinking was, you have 40,000 that we're building this budget on that was going to a social emotional support?
Right.
And you could now move that towards an actual teacher. It, it does reduce what they would have had, but they still have a line item, will get some money for the social.
Right, but then other schools wouldn't benefit from that 40, like Beth said.
Is it possible that there is a one-on-one para situation happening at Berchlin for students that might just naturally fit into this position? And then they wouldn't necessarily need a one, although it is written in IP.
Well, if it's written in IP.
It is an IP, but IP's, if they feel that this is a better program, you can always go back and talk to a family, this is what we're thinking.
True, but we can't set it up until an IP's been officially changed and signed.
Every year, the, the paras can shift between schools, it happens inevitably, right? There's a couple here and there.
Happening right now.
Right now.
It can happen in December.
Can we just, can we make an executive decision that we're gonna cut one para from Meadowbrook or total, so that we can take an FTE and slide it over to the social emotional from the district? It doesn't matter where it comes from to me.
You just, the FTEs to remain the same.
I would like our FTEs to be 400.7.
I think it would be challenging right now to identify where you wanna reduce one para, because we're looking at what the needs are for next year, and then trying to make sure that we're meeting those needs.
But within that, if we take one out of the bucket before we spread them all out again, is that a reasonable thing? I know that we use all the people.
The only one that you really have is, is the, right now, tech para. I don't believe we have any other unfilled.
I'm thinking of 1.5.
You think you have a 1.5?
I do, yeah.
Okay.
Say that again, I lost.
I believe it's 1.5.
So you have one, one that's unfilled, which is on this sheet.
Oh, it's unfilled.
Which is at the high school.
And you're saying you have another 1.5 out there?
I believe I do. Sorry, I'm just thinking about that now.
But are we, do we have any paras retiring? We must.
You do.
So we'll have open positions next year, paras.
True, but I would, I would, before committing to reducing the paras, I'd like to finish off those meetings with principals to make sure that we're covering all the needs.
Can, can we make a commitment to 400.7 FTEs, if that's the will of the committee, and however you wanna get there, we can get there later?
Sure, we can make a commitment, absolutely.
But with that, though, for me, I know we're talking order, but social emotional is more important for me than number two, however, I do take the, the suggestion on how to achieve two, and maybe we do that as well. I mean, if our FTEs are still 400.7, and we can do it within the constraints of the budget that we're provided.
Right, because they already have a half a person.
That's a full.
A full, yeah, oh, that's a full person.
So that's a one, one FTE.
Yeah.
The difference is your salaries, obviously.
There'll be some cost difference.
And you might not know if you can do this until August.
Yeah, it's too late, it's too early.
Right, until August, but if we say, you know, keep it at this, and if you can do it based on the FTEs being the same, you might find August, you know, 15th, all of a sudden, you need that extra para, and we can, we can post. You know what I'm saying?
Right, I mean, that'll be, that'll, that's the driving factor, is when you would have to post to fill these jobs.
Like, I know that, you know, Berchlin has to create a room and this sort of a thing, but better late than never.
Well, when do we have to know on that, Gordon? What do you think?
To really go through this and make sure that you have both the position and the potential funding, we're gonna need the next few weeks to see how retirement replacements and that hiring goes.
Okay.
And then...
That'll give us enough time to hire, though, for these positions? Or can we just commit to it?
It's more challenging, but yeah.
I would like to request, could we post for them, Gordon, contingent upon funding, so that, because now is when it's all happening.
Or anticipated need.
Anticipated need, or...
Well, that's what I'm saying, though, if we can't, we can't make that commitment right now to, to commit the FTEs to 400.7 and to have those two positions be posted.
Certainly, I mean, you absolutely can commit and have a vote that you want us to hold, which is what we were trying to do, stay with the 400.7. What I cannot say to you at the moment is that we're gonna have all the funding in place until we've done some hiring of the replacements right now and have talked to the principals.
Okay.
Can't you post, as Pam said, can't you post any anticipated?
You could post anticipated, and then if you don't have the funding or the FTE availability, then you pull the public...
Go ahead.
So, Miss, Miss, right now, you're saying that there's a 1.5 unfilled FTE out there right now, 1.5 per system?
That's what I'm saying, yes.
So what we'd need to find another 1.5, if we follow Mr. Thompson's fact.
That's correct.
Is another way to accomplish what we're talking about in a different way? What was that FTE, Mr. Thompson, was up to 4.401.2? You have a problem with that?
The reason why, yes, is my belief is that the council funded our existing budget plus contractual increases, which is the same amount in FTEs, plus one FTE. So in your words of transparency, then we should come in with one FTE more than we have this year.
Which we have right now.
And we're actually assuming the 1.2, but the 1.2 is already, we're already paying benefits, or the potential's already there, so there's no increase in benefit liability. So that's what I'm trying to do.
At this point, would, because I know the research room teachers kind of have an idea of moving forward for the new year for students, I know they do not want them on one-on-ones as much as possible, because they need a little more getting out there and being on their own, would they have any idea? I mean, I know that nothing's set in stone until the signatures are signed, but, I mean, they gotta have some sort of an idea if they think there's a half a person moving around, or somebody that had two students might have three students and that other one opened up.
It's not so much that they don't have an idea. What is shifting and what we sit down with the principals about is you have students transitioning between buildings.
Right.
So the way we basically assign paraprofessionals is we have four tiers. So your first tier is exactly what you've been talking about, is your one-to-one. So we already know where students who have IP's and have a one-to-one paraprofessional in their IP, where those assignments are. Then the next tier is substantially separate programs. That's a little bit more challenging, because sometimes in a substantially separate program, you may have five students, three of whom have one-to-ones. So now, do you fix or assign two paraprofessionals to that program, as you might have done in the past?
Right.
When you already have the teacher and maybe three other adults in the room?
Right.
So that's some of what we're working out right now.
Yeah, I know.
Because basically, what we have to look at is, as students transition through the grades, some buildings may also transition paraprofessionals, others may receive more paraprofessionals, and so that's, that's what we're assigning as we go through.
And also, Greg, if somebody arrives this summer and they require a one-on-one, that number's gonna go up. But it won't go up based on, you know what I mean?
Right, but it's not our approved budget.
Right, right.
Generally, what we do with that is, depending on where that need is, again, we first look at, well, how can we schedule differently? So that if we're pulling a para who maybe was supporting inclusion or services that are being brought into the mainstream classroom, is there an ability to shift and support classrooms while also providing what the new student may need? So we, we do that, and actually, we've been pretty successful doing that, but it does take a lot of planning and shifting and having a contingency plan in terms of flexibility in your scheduling.
I have a thought, I mean, I know, what I'm saying is, was back when we had appropriations committee, but I remember making a phone call and saying, we can stay within our budget, we'd like to hire one more teacher. I remember the answer being, yes, as long as you stay within our budget. So if we're staying within our budget, why is the FTE still concerning? If we stay within our budget?
Because part of the FTEs are not within our budget, and that's the liability of the health insurance and benefits. So the more employees that we add or the town adds, the, the more we have as a liability. So to, to keep an eye on FTEs, I think is fiscally prudent for us to do, and if the council only wanted to fund one additional FTE, then...
Greg, I, I know what you're saying, and it is always, it is the potential that we could have everyone that all of our employees want or need health insurance, but the reality is, that's not the way it is.
No, I know.
Those numbers are, I just would like to remind the committee, those numbers are always changing. We get somebody in, they don't need insurance, their spouse has it. And so I just wanted to remind you of that, that just because we have that does not mean that they're all getting insurance.
No, I know, but actuarially...
And that if we are, I would just like to add one other thing, if we are extremely transparent, especially about that $40,000 for the...
Social emotional.
Thank you, the social emotional, doesn't that say a lot to the town council as it is, when we keep stressing this, and everyone hears about the social emotional, we need to do something? And if we're going to now take it from one program to, to help the whole district with, with this, this teaching position, because it is a known fact that we need that, doesn't that count for something? And I guess back to what Mr. Fercher was said, if, if we have a 1.5 and all we really need is a 1.5, should we be talking about that, and what's the, what's the correct balance? It's only a 1.5, Greg, and if we can stay within our budget...
It's a different of benefits, though, from a 1.5 to a 1 is the difference of the option of benefits for the town, so it's a liability. I know, I get, if it was me, and based on the information we know about the town's budget, they should have funded everything. I, I think it was a missed opportunity, these are all things we are in dire need of, and we have to do our best to get. They didn't see that the same way, so we have to deal with what they've given us. They've recognized an additional position, so we can work within our budget.
One, one thing that may be helpful, just in terms of sort of understanding all of this and feeling comfortable with it, just as much as the paraprofessional need is fluid, that's also our most mobile group or fluid group, meaning that a lot of them are looking to become teachers, and so they may leave during the year to take another job, or they leave, we've had resignations, I believe, not only this month, but probably the last two months. And what we do there is, we may not post for a full-time position, we may be putting a substitute in place. So in terms of what's on the town's rolls in terms of benefit, at the end of the year, we could be, in many cases, lower than we started at the beginning of the year, because of people exiting. Now, the other side does work too, sometimes you may have an increase, but at least the last three years, we've seen a lot of exits, as individuals pass the licensure exams, they get, they become licensed and they move on to other jobs.
That's gonna happen regardless of whether we add one more.
True, I guess what I'm saying just is...
No, I know, it's fluid, I get it.
So the, so the town is no longer carrying benefits if that person took benefits?
Well, but we still have an FTE, and as soon as we fill the position the following year, they're still qualified for benefits.
That's true.
I, I just really, and we, this is a, this is a democracy, I just feel that we should stick to the 400.7, because that's what we were budgeted by the council. Everybody wants to do differently, it is what it is, but my vote's gonna be for 400.7, and I'd like to fund the social emotional, I'd like to fund the instructional technology, and definitely the special needs teacher. So there's some things that, or it's a big ask, because we have to find those FTEs full-time, or at least one FTE somewhere.
Well, we have a 1.5 FTE have to be found.
That's correct.
Yeah, well, but it, but it's not only a 1.5, because the 1.5 now doesn't get benefits.
No, no, it, it do.
No.
No, 1.5.
1.5, it doesn't.
1.5, you are correct.
So to find another 1.5 is another non-benefit, so that's two non-benefits does not equal one FTE with benefits.
Right.
So we need to find a full FTE.
They need 1.6 or more to get benefits.
To satisfy that.
I mean, it's gonna be, it's a, it's a challenge, but I, I agree with what you're saying, Greg. I'm not opposed to saying, staying at that number, but we do have to get creative. We have to do our best to find these things.
We have 400 employees, we gotta be able to find one.
Well, it's...
We can shift, it just, the FTE...
Using your reasoning, Mr. Thompson, the only thing we can fund right now is number two.
Yeah.
Unless we change the priority.
Well, yeah, unless we change the order, which I would, and I think Beth might too.
I would too.
I would change it.
What were we thinking about then?
Well, I know, no, no, because things, as I said, we're making an investment.
What kind of message you sent into the high school then?
It's not, you know, we, going back to what Greg said, they all should have been funded. I'm not trying to send the wrong message to anybody.
Well, you are gonna be sent if you also send number two.
I'm just kidding, I'm one man with an opinion, that's it.
So, but let's, let's stick with this, if we do one, which was funded by the town, we can all agree to that, right?
Right, correct.
Two is an option, because there is an FTE that's similar, actually, and there'll be some additional salary costs, but the benefits are the same.
Right.
All we need to do is find one more FTE that we can not fill, and we can fund the third one.
How many positions at the high school are retiring this year?
Even though we've got $40,000 towards...
Yes, because I wanna use that anyway, we should use that and not put that, would we, if we hire the, the full-time social emotional specialist, would we still have a use for the 40,000 other places within the district?
Yeah, the schools certainly would, would...
But we wouldn't be staying within our budget, Greg, so we're trying to...
No, but I wanna do this by, and that's what I'm asking, if we can not fund another FTE and fund this, then we wouldn't need to move the 40,000.
But if it's...
If it's a para, we may have to.
Yeah.
But if it's, say, it's another teacher that we find we don't need to fill, I don't know where that would be.
It's, I think it is.
This is not discussions that we've had with the principals, so...
And it's something you'll have to have, but...
One of the reasons why we haven't is because we've looked at, the town has helped us move forward, we're beyond level services, and so we've never talked reduction in force. So basically, what we're talking about is reduction in force regarding some program somewhere.
I don't wanna riff anybody, I just wanted to not...
I know, Greg.
Or shift, can we shift, or whatever?
I want to remind you that a strategy that every district has to use to survive and to move a district forward, is when you have your retirees who have been in a district for 20, 30 years, they're at the top of the scale, I don't need to throw out numbers, we all know that they're at the top. So, you know, the goal is, some positions you can come in a little lower, some positions we all know are a little more challenging, and you have to have someone a little more experienced, but there's, there's a balance there. So we have a pot of money, and we need to make it work, but that's how we bring a district forward, is by using those savings to bring on a program, to bring on a new teacher. So sometimes it is adding the FTEs, it's not just, because the town council votes that bottom-line budget, not our FTE, they, they vote our bottom-line budget.
They voted to increase our budget by one FTE.
And gave us that amount of money, but...
Right, so in Rich's point, and we can't just find the money and all of a sudden fund four additional FTEs, I'm not, it's not acceptable to me, because if we're able to find the money, the money should be there.
The town council should understand.
I know we're shifting, but...
Strategically, you're not finding money, what you're, and you're not, you can't move on it to, unless you have reviewed what you've hired in terms of your replacement positions. And then at that point, maybe you can't move on it at all.
But maybe we can't.
So, no, what I'm saying is, it's not a situation, using that strategy, that you're going to be able to answer today or tomorrow, we're gonna have to go through the hiring of replacements, and then you look, what do we budget for these 14 retirement positions? Is there any money available to fund an additional position?
That's why, well, but that happens every year.
I think this...
Right? It will happen regardless of whether or not we hire a social emotional teacher. Those savings we're still gonna realize, right?
Some savings, but is there gonna be enough savings to fund a teacher?
Right, we don't know that.
Right. I mean, you may have some savings and the truth be told, sometimes we don't have, you know, you don't have the savings that you counted on.
Which is fine, because I think we should be hiring the best, not necessarily the cheapest, right? And I know we all feel that way, I know everybody feels that way. I know there's incentive to get a less expensive professional, but I think we always hire one of the best.
We certainly wanna hire the best candidate in the field. You also wanna make sure that you have a fit in terms of the person, the building, the culture and so forth.
Greg, it's not because you don't necessarily want that extra FTE. It's because you, I'm assuming you're trying to say, the town council has given us these parameters, we want us to stay within those parameters, so they understand that we just can't be pulling these people when we think we need them, right? That we've gotta work within what they've given us, just so people out there understand. That's what you're trying to get at.
Right.
That they told us, we don't want you, when they didn't budget because it, not because they didn't necessarily want us not to have it, but they said, these three last items are not something that we feel the town, to keep it within its, you know, tax rate, is willing to put out. So that's why we're having this conversation now, just so people understand.
To expand even further.
It's not that we're trying to be difficult.
May I add one point to that?
I hope I don't sound a bit...
No, I want people to understand that.
The forty thousand is within that bottom line.
Yes.
Which is why that's a strategy that you can use. So the forty thousand is within everything that they've provided in terms of the FY 2019 budget. And so that's why it's listed here. And that's something that town council has heard me discuss, as well as town manager and the town finance director. What you're doing is you're taking the forty thousand and you're not putting it into contracted services, which is what our original budget development process was, and you're moving it and you're saying, it's more important or more urgent to hire a social emotional teacher at Burson Park. So that gets you well on the way to hiring that position if other things fall into place in terms of savings. But you would still have to go through our replacement hiring for the retirement positions and see where we are. What it doesn't solve is the FTE piece that you're...
To, just to expand on what Beth said, when they, when the town council finance subcommittee or budget subcommittee, whatever they were called, met, they in essence lapped off everybody's supplemental request, if you wanna call it supplemental. It all came down to new positions. The only new position that was funded in the entire budget personnel-wise was our intensive special needs.
But that's not really a supplemental budget item.
No, no, no.
It never should have been in the supplemental budget.
What I'm saying is... I think it, I think anything new should be supplemental.
Well, but...
No, because anybody could say that though, Beth, you could say that about anything.
Well, I know, but we need, there's, we have IEP contracts that have to meet this.
But don't lose, don't lose sight of what I said, because they took every, there were a lot of...
No, I know that, they did.
There were a lot of personnel requests out there.
It was huge.
It was huge this year.
It's like a field day.
Right, but I think they've realized.
And they realized...
They realized that we have to move this program forward, we don't...
Well, no, no, but what I'm saying is, this was the program, they funded it saying, and they made it clear, this was the only new position that was funded, which they can say, but they lapped everybody else off. They understand, and then that's Greg's point of staying to this 400.7 or whatever the number is.
So when we're looking at this, theoretically, we're getting number one. Number two, we have the human sitting, the position, we have that position there. There is some funding that would be there for a pair, which is a pittance, but it's there, right? And then you might be able to fund that a little bit through retirements.
You're gonna have to.
Do we not need the .5? What's the .5? What, is that a position we're gonna not fill necessarily?
I don't know the answer, I believe it is going to be filled next year or...
Oh, will be filled anyway.
Yes, we have.
I think it deals with a tuitioned-in situation.
Yes, it does.
And so ultimately...
Oh, it pays for itself.
Correct.
So it's kind of a moot point, the .5?
It's, well, it's no longer, it's no longer on our salary line item.
Well, so how much are people hung up on the FTEs? I know I am, but I don't know everybody else.
I could be fluid on it, but I'm not saying go make it 410, but if it got to 402, I wouldn't have a problem.
And then how, well, and I guess my second question was gonna be about the order, but if people are willing to go above the FTEs, then it doesn't matter the order, I suppose.
Well, I think...
My second question was gonna be, do we wanna change the order, make sure we fund one and change two or not and fund two? I think we can fund two of them.
Well, then I think we need to order the same.
I would recommend, I'm not recommending a priority, that discussion all of you need to have. But whatever is the strategy, I would recommend that we continue to communicate with town manager, town finance director and at least the town council president, so they're aware that none of these items that are outlined on this spreadsheet are items that they haven't seen. They've seen it in some way, shape or form, they may not have seen them implemented in a strategic way like this. But they know where, you know, it would be easy to outline that for them and bring them up the speed.
But they're not supposed to tell us who we have.
Correct, this is just making sure that they're understanding what we're thinking about, because you're going to wait on at least two, three, as some hiring takes place to see where that hiring is going.
But I would, I would go back and post in anticipation.
I would too.
You know, just to get it out there in case some, you know, I don't think we wanna wait till August when the dust settles.
No, none of us are gonna wait till August.
But I would post in anticipation.
Well, I think before we do that, we would have to prioritize ultimately what the committee would like to do.
Because I feel if you think you have a half FTE, you don't.
No, they don't.
Well, no, no.
It's not even gonna be there next year.
No, it won't be there.
It's a tuitioned...
Yeah, it's tuitioned in.
The needs changed at the high school.
We're playing with, we're playing with dominoes right now.
I know we are.
We're moving, we're moving chess pieces.
I also feel like we got rid of seventeen FTEs, this, this...
I know.
School system, okay, we let all these people go, all right, granted, they're going hopefully mostly to the collaborative and it's a long-term goal for, you know, the health of the town and I understand it, but we just went, just like that, and off they went. And, you know, so...
Wasn't as quick as that.
Yeah, I know, it took a little longer. But it feels that way, I'm having, I'm having guilt over it. Yes, we did, we discussed a long time, we thought about it. So I guess I feel if we need that, to try to figure that out, you know, especially if it's... I think I just wanna see the social emotional thing in. And I really believe that these technology person with the spot that's there for the pair, I think that that will pan out. I just think it'll pan out, because I think that with retirees and people coming in and I think that that could just pan out for itself.
I just wanted, while you guys were talking, I looked in school spring, just to give you a little bit of context for teacher positions that are open, without using, just giving you numbers. Out of looking specifically at six different positions that are currently posted, all of them have half or more of the applicant pool being over ten years' experience applying. This is a district that really attracts veteran, high-quality teachers. Not to say that younger teachers aren't high-quality, but I'm saying your applicant pool is more than half veteran teachers. So the savings that we're trying for is gonna be a stretch without adding to meet the needs that you identified as priorities. Just some info.
Without add, wow, we can't, we can't add, we can't add funding.
And I'm not, I'm not giving up an opinion on it, I'm just giving you a piece of information, because it seems like a lot of the conversations around, if we do this, then we have that.
Well, you only, you're correct, absolutely, the if is big. So you have to allow the first round of hiring to happen to see if you have...
Right.
Which is why the forty thousand is something that you could strategically use, because you're not going to have to make as big a leap to fund one of these positions.
I would still keep the conversation going with town accountant, town manager, town council president, because it can't...
What's gonna change though, Bill? What are you looking for?
There's turnback money, there's still turnback.
They're not changing our budget, you think they're gonna add into our budget?
I wasn't told no. It's, I went through, I went through the chair and I talked to the town council president.
So if that happens, yep.
And after the last meeting, and we talked the day of that meeting, and Deidre knew what was going on. And he said, listen, I understand what you're asking and what the needs are, let's see what happens. They're not saying no.
But you would have to go back and request a transfer.
I know that, I'm aware of that. I'm aware of the process. But I, I don't know, you know, we're, I think we're all in agreement here, we wanna see the positions. How do we get there, is the question and the problem.
And I don't know that any additional funding is coming our way, especially if we're the ones who got the one position.
Yeah, I know, but I just don't think conversations can hurt.
But we can't hold on it, well...
A conversation doesn't cost any money. That's the only thing. I would post it in anticipation, let's let the system work its way out, see what happens and see where we are in a month or so.
There's also been a lot of positions that have been added through the year within the town, not the school system.
Oh, I know.
That have been added, that aren't, that weren't counted in prior to, they were all approved in the last budget.
The town certainly can't add positions without town council approving the budget.
We can do it more than they can.
Right. I mean, how many did we have last year?
In terms of...
Did they give us any?
FTEs?
Yep.
It's right here.
Yeah, it's 2.3 different.
No, I mean, that's how many, how many new ones did they say we could, you know, do we ask for more last year?
In our budget last year?
Yeah.
How many did we get last year?
We had like one or... It was a couple of positions, right?
Not new positions. The new position was at the kindergarten level.
Okay.
But remember, we funded that through the revolving account.
Okay.
So that wasn't a position that came out of...
The budget.
Operational budget or free cash or anything.
Finished?
We did in August.
That was last year.
In August.
Well, we did last year, with the new kindergarten class.
But we funded it this year out of the operating budget.
It had to be funded out of the operating budget.
We funded it out of the revolving account.
This year was revolving account?
Yes.
We cleaned it up.
Yeah, next year, next year it'll be the operating.
Next year it's on the operating.
Last year, earlier in the year...
Is that reflected in the numbers?
Yes.
It's like 195,000, isn't it, something like that?
That's included in our contractual increase, right?
Yes, that's correct.
I mean, it's not an easy problem to solve here, you know.
No, which is why we wanted to outline it in...
Right.
Get some direction.
Direct way, most direct way possible.
Like I said, let's post in anticipation and see what happens and let the system work itself out and we see where we are in a month, when the, you know, when the dust starts settling. And you've done that first round of hires. I don't know what else I'll...
Wow, but we need specific directions. So the direction is to stick to either an FTE number or to fund all three of those positions. I don't know, we can't, we can't commit to that.
Oh, no, we attempt.
We can't commit to funding all three.
No.
And does it stay in this order?
At the moment, you can't. So it really is a question as to whether you prioritize, stay with the current order as it's prioritized. Do you shift that?
Right.
In that motion, is there, are there any of these strategies that the committee feels they can commit to?
Do you think it's a mistake to shift?
I would go to guess that's...
Based on the high school and their reaction?
No, no, based on, based on where we made this out, that's all.
But I feel they have the FTE sitting here, so I guess I feel like...
Yeah, but it still comes down to funding.
I know that, but the FTE's sitting there and the possibility of getting that person is greater if we move him to three than it is for, you don't think so? Social emotional or three, because there's no human there for that.
Stay in that line of thinking, you would also have to commit in the motion, the tech para position remains unfilled and is brought over as an FTE to the instructional technology specialist.
It's complicated.
Otherwise, to utilize it, I think, is what you're saying, is you wanna use the tech para to cover the FTE for the social emotional.
Well, not necessarily, because I think that, I wouldn't do that.
No, I don't think we could do that. No, can't do that.
A deficiency at the high school, right? I would take, if that was your recommendation, yes, or the high school's recommendation, but I don't know if that's...
More or less, strategies as they're outlined were my recommendations.
But I think if we, if we take the tech para and shift it, that's gonna cause problems.
Yeah, I don't think, I misunderstood, I don't think that's what you were proposing.
No, not necessarily, I'm only prioritizing to try to fund the second or...
That's why I don't know if we can change the priority, because of where that tech position's sitting.
Yeah, because I think, I think that they're trying to hold that...
Would this committee be okay with funding the instructional technology specialist and not filling the tech para position, but potentially not filling the social emotional teacher as well? Because that's what our priority list is. Otherwise, we have to change the priorities.
Well, if, yeah. If we don't change the priorities, then it's gonna have to stay like that.
Here's what I wanna do, I wanna fund the social emotional teacher. If you can tell me that we can fund all three of those and stay within 200.7, 400.7, then I'm all done. But I don't know that we're there yet, right? We can't say that tonight.
No, we would have to, just as we've been discussing.
So my commitment is to fund...
We'd have to do some replacement hiring and talk with the leadership team to see what other positions might still be open and where we are in terms of need.
I really think we should fund that social emotional teacher, based on what you were saying, Bill, about it's time. If we don't do it, we're not helping ourselves.
I know.
Yeah, it's another year. So...
Well, in that, in that respect, do you wanna change, are we gonna change the priority?
Well, but how are we gonna fund, how are we gonna find that FTE otherwise? Because we're not, we're saying that the para, the tech para, we're not gonna use, right?
We're trying to stay within like areas.
Because that, well, that technology specialist do pick up some of the...
It would probably be distributed amongst the administrators, the instructional technology specialist, but the responsibilities that the tech para was handling, right now, we're handling with a number of different people.
Teachers?
No.
Oh, students.
No administrators.
The paras, were you on the administrators?
The tech para resigned, took another position.
Okay.
The responsibilities that that person was handling on a daily basis are now handled by the administrators. So eventually, we would like to even out that load.
Yeah.
And so we would probably share that with the instructional technology specialist, administrators might keep some.
Yep.
IT might get into the discussion, so that maybe there's some things that we can ask them to do.
Does IT have a person?
It's not our budget.
Well, I thought they could share.
They didn't get the one they were looking for.
Yeah, they didn't get, he didn't get what he wanted.
Okay, well, what's the, what's the pleasure? What do you have, Rich? I'm not asking you, you're not, you're looking for what I want. Beth, what do you have?
No, I...
No, hey, what do you want?
Well, I think we've got to decide a some direction for the superintendent.
I know.
At very least.
After we beat this dead horse again.
For my thought process, I guess I feel that if we leave that tech para position alongside the instructional technology specialist and move it down to three, I think that it's in a safe spot to happen at some point. I do think it could happen this year. I think that because... I wanna see the social emotional thing, so I, I mean, I'm willing to go up, I mean, if we went up, I don't know.
Can we do this, let me see if we can do this, can we commit to the 400.7 if it's the committee's pleasure? And can we commit to the three positions and you all can just figure out how to do it?
Well, that's direction.
That's direction from the committee, but it is, I'm not being serious, because there's a, there's a serious concern that the social emotional is funded. Highest priority for me, we're showing funding sources for the other two, so why can't we just say, we would like all three positions funded and we wanna keep within the 400.7? There's gonna need to be tough decisions, but let us be the heavies and find out how we can make it happen.
And if it really comes down to not happening, come back to us.
Because it's the direction, it can be done.
Come back to us, maybe you need to make it that.
Within the order that you have?
Yeah.
Yeah, don't change the order.
Doesn't matter, the order doesn't matter.
You can get some and not all.
Well, we'll have to figure out, we'll have to figure out the FTEs too. So your motion would be to...
All right, here we go.
Because they might know, the principals might have something in the back of their mind that they haven't shared yet because they're trying to keep it closed, and I get it, they don't wanna like, nobody wants to give up a para, nobody wants to give up an employee in their school.
Remember, we also shot down a principal last summer when she tried to do that, let's remember that, we've already set the message.
Well, you need to, you need to understand that...
The principals are saying.
I understand that, but you also have to understand that was eliminating an entire program and it just caught us all off guard. So, and I'm, that's why I feel she needs to keep the, she's got that tech para there, so she's in a good spot for this happening. But that was just a special set of circumstances.
All right, let me take a stab at this.
Okay.
I move that we keep the FY 19 FTEs at 400.7 and direct superintendent and assistant superintendent for business to work on funding the other three positions.
No, are the two positions?
Only two positions, I'm sorry.
Within the 400.7?
Within the, within the 400.7. Did that cover it? Somebody's got a second before we work this out.
No, I'm thinking about, I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion.
I just had a quick question, the .2 music teacher, did the town council say yes to that? They did not?
No. Well, they, they didn't increase the 63,000 additional, but we have discussed it with them, they know that we're posting for a 1.0.
Have they?
So there's savings, Beth, in the, the .1.0 will actually probably cost us less than the .8.
Okay.
Point eight.
And the .8 is eligible for benefits, as is the 1.0.
As is, okay.
So there's no change.
I was just trying to throw it with the .7.
No, doesn't change, doesn't change liability for the town.
Got it.
I guess before we vote, I just wanna say that if, if the superintendent and the two assistant superintendents find that they can't stay within the 400.7, rather make, they'll make a decision not to fund something, rather they came back to us.
They have to come back to us, yeah.
They have to come back to us?
Yes. But come back to us, you know what I mean, like, like.
Wow, but, but, but are we literally gonna say that we're not gonna fund the social emotional teacher? Are we gonna say that to them?
No.
No, but we've got.
So we just gotta give strict directions and just have them do it? I don't know why, why would they have to come back to us?
If they can't.
If needs change within the FTEs, it wouldn't be one of these positions, it would be if we were unable to meet all the needs on the FTEs.
Yeah, well, yeah, but we have to meet those though, we have to meet those.
Yeah, but.
We do.
Right.
So.
Okay, fair enough.
And that's the challenge, within, within the 400.7, as you're shifting and adding two of those FTEs, or at least one FTE within that, yeah.
But I gotta say.
All we have to do is find one out of 400, we need one FTE.
We will do our best.
Okay, thank you, Pam.
Because if I, if I had to say that, if, if having the social emotional thing makes one or two kids' lives better, it is worth the town having an extra human, if push comes to shove.
All right, so motions been made and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing not all, as a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no.
No.
No, motion carries three to one. Thank you for that long discussion, it's worthwhile.
Yes, it is.
Sorry, it takes a little while.
No, it's, it's a very worthwhile discussion, we appreciate the direction. Thank you.
Uh, new business.
That was some heavy stuff, heavy stuff now.
And the county sheriff's department would like to place a portable repeater on the press box at the high school July 3rd, they do it every year, can I have a motion?
Motion to allow the hand of county sheriff's department to place a portable repeater on the press box at East Long Meadow, January 3rd, and it be taken down once the event has been completed.
You meant July 3rd, obviously.
July 3rd, right, yeah.
I'll second. Motion made and seconded, discussion. Hearing not all, as a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries four to zero. Batting cage at Burchland Park.
Okay, in your package, you have a diagram showing the two softball fields at Burchland Park, and with DPW and the rec department, we've located a spot between the fields where we could add a batting cage that could be used by both sides if you were to actually have two games going on at once, and it really is the only place that we could fit that batting cage, so it could.
Where's the batting cage going from?
It's going from.
What about the soccer fields?
Soccer fields on the other side.
They're on the other side.
See where the, where the Google sign is?
This is Burchland.
But this, I mean, I don't even, I'm sorry, there's not even a memo here from Dr. Allen approving this. I, I feel very comfortable approving anything, although Dr. Allen's memo saying that he approves where it's going, is that gonna affect his education classes?
No, Dr. Allen actually has been part of this.
He's, there's no memo for him, Mr. Superintendent. I have nothing here saying that he's approving it, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just saying, it's a matter of process.
Okay.
We all, we have a map here.
Who's, who's gonna do it?
DPW would put it in, they've mapped out the sprinklers, they'd be removing the sprinklers that you see in the X's there, and they would be putting in the equipment, which.
And what is it gonna be up for?
At least similar to the batting cages that we use here at the baseball field.
And how do we fund it? Or is that who paid for it?
Rec, rec department already has the cage itself, it now is putting it in.
DPW was gonna put it in.
DPW is going through.
Well, you're gonna say that Dr. Allen's all in favor of this.
Dr. Allen has been consulted, but you are correct that there is not a memo from him, but he's been part of the discussions, and he, he has been in favor of this.
Okay.
So in the future, though.
It would be good to have.
You might want.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Move to approve the batting cage at Burchland Park.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing not all, as a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you.
First reading.
Okay. So you have a series of, or the continuing series of revisions to policies that are in our manual and in most school districts manuals, these are revisions that the MAC is recommending, in most cases, they are language revisions, such as, first one, policy CB is school superintendent, the two changes, you have our current policy above, and you have MAC's recommendation below, the two changes are going from the very specific general law, chapter 71, section 59, in the second sentence, and opening that up to a more general statement of mass general laws, that the superintendent shall act in accordance with mass general laws, which does make sense, superintendent should act in accordance with mass general laws.
Yes, for sure.
And then making a change that's more specific to the town of East Long Meadow, given that we now have the town manager, and the annual report is provided each year to the town manager.
Do we still do an annual report?
We do.
We do, really?
It's actually in the.
Do we still publish it?
We do.
And we, I haven't.
It's actually in the journal now.
Yeah.
It's in the journal.
In fat book, right?
Yeah, it's a pretty big book, yeah, okay.
So we have a bunch of first readings, we can kinda go through them, I guess, superintendent contract?
Okay. So second policy, first for first reading, is file CBD, superintendent's contract. Again, what I've tried to do with all of these is give you our current policy and then where the changes are. So if you look at the bottom, where the highlighted areas, the sentence is revised, instead of upon the election, which was the original wording, it's now upon the appointment of a candidate to be superintendent, so that's one change. Superintendents are appointed, not elected. And then an additional sentence has been added in the MAC version in accordance with said contract, or in the absence of specific contract language, by vote of the members, the committee may choose to negotiate a successor contract with an incumbent superintendent, along with the note at the bottom, which basically talks about the law, that you can, the maximum years you can contract with the superintendent would be six years. You can have a subsequent contract, but the maximum number in any given contract. Okay?
Evaluation of superintendent.
Okay. So this is file CBE, CBI, excuse me, again, I've highlighted the areas on the MAC, that the MAC is revised, so the first one is, they just added introductory statement, evaluation can serve the purpose of helping educators and educational leaders continually improve their practice. Then they, you notice that in the original policy, there are four areas outlined, there continues, there continues to be four areas that are outlined, however, the wording has been revised in each one of those areas. Basically, what they're trying to do here is bring this policy into what currently is going on across Massachusetts, which is using the model evaluation system, and the fact that we work together to establish goals.
CE, administrative councils, cabinets, and committees.